Hello and welcome to this installment of Frank and Mary in Westboro. I'm your host Shelby Marshall, proudly serving as a member of your select board. Normally I'm joined by Arthur Bergeron, my co-host, but Arthur is away on an official work duty, so today you just have me, but I'm joined by some amazing guests. One new and one repeat return guest. So right here in the middle we have Kristi Williams, our town manager. And on the end we have Dr. Daniel Mayer, who is the Assistant Superintendent. So welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
So we cover a lot. We were talking before we started taping the show about like what is the purpose of this show? And if you've watched this before, you know it's really about the people you need to know in Westboro and the things that are going on that you need to know about. And this show is a really important one because we're talking about the upcoming Fall Town Meeting. And we're going to kick that discussion off with our town manager and she's going to give us an overview and then we're going to talk about some of the highlights, some of the many articles that are on the warrant and then we'll transition to Daniel and he'll talk about the ones that are on there for the school. But I love town meeting, lots of debate over whether or not it's the right format, but it is the purest example of democracy where people get to come. It is the town's legislative body. It's your choice to be there and to place your vote for how your tax dollars are being spent. So a lot of people think that the select board and the school committee spend all the money or the town departments do. No, actually you do with your vote. So with that, Kristi.
Great. Thank you. I actually have a couple of slides that I'm going to show just to talk about town meeting in general.
Excellent.
So I think those are going to come up on your screen soon, but the first one is the most important one, which is that town meeting is on Monday, October 17th. Sorry, October 17th at 7:00 PM. Really important is that if anyone needs a ride to town meeting, the senior center is offering that service so they can schedule a ride by contacting the senior center and that phone number is right up on the screen.
Awesome. That's so helpful. And just to be clear, you don't have to be a senior to use the senior center transportation because it's a town event. If you have, you're 40 and you broke your leg and you want to get to town meeting, call the senior center. They'll help you on that.
Definitely.
Great.
Yep. So we have 30 articles on the warrant this year for the Fall Town Meeting and the ones that I really wanted to focus on in my second slide is the ones that will have an impact on taxes.
Okay.
So those are what we call raise and appropriate articles because it's raised and appropriated on the taxes. Raised on the taxes and appropriated. And so I'll just walk through those. Article three is the FY23 Finance Department Budget Adjustment. You'll see lots of these are budget adjustments because all of our money for our budgets are raised on the taxes. So in the Finance Department, we have about an $11,000 increase to that budget and that's because we've had a change in classification for our chief assessor. So we are requiring that additional funding for that position.
And that classification was driven by kind of looking at that job description and the work that was actually being done by, in this case, him, but the role that we expect of that and so that adjustment was made to that classification.
That's right. Yep. And we do use a schedule or criteria that we go by and so we use that to update the job description, which pushed into the next classification.
Great.
The second article with the raise and appropriate is the Public Works Department Budget Adjustment. So you'll see I wrote general fund there. That's because the total article has three funding sources. One of them is the water department budget and that's paid by user fees and the other sewer department budget, which is paid by user fees. But the $76,000 would be raised on the taxes. And that's largely driven by an increase in costs for our water operator contract and then also fuel costs because we all know that the fuel costs are going up and so this is a response to that.
Right. Okay.
The next one that we have is the School Department Budget Adjustment. So I'll let Daniel speak to that and his comments, but that one is also a raise and appropriate, the $628,000, so it's about $81 to the average single family. And then the Police Department Budget Adjustment is just under $22,000. This adjustment is to cover the cost of a contract, a union contract with the supervisors' union.
And just for the viewer's benefit, we have, how many town contracts do we have?
We have six.
Six union contracts. And on the school side you have?
Seven.
Seven. Okay. And these are on a cyclical basis, typically about three years for every contract. They may vary and it's the role and responsibility of the select board, town manager, and then respectively, school committee and department administration to negotiate those contracts with the unions. And so that's why we see that because things go up.
Right. And so this one has just been recently settled. So that one, so we need to make the adjustment for the current, the school year.
Right.
Yep. And then the last raise and appropriate article is for the Asvet Valley Budget Adjustment. So that's the Vocational and Technical School that we're a part of. And that budget adjustment is really related to the calculation of our assessments. So we pay an assessment based on the number of students that we send to Asvet. And there was an issue with how it was calculated and so they need to raise an additional $8700.
Adjustment. Yep. Okay. Okay. Great.
So the total amount that we're estimating, if all of those were to pass, is about $96 to the average single family.
Okay. And so what we just saw on the screen is the $96 for those articles.
Correct.
Not the fully loaded warrant.
So these are the only articles that will have a tax impact.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So if we had a live audience, this would be a great time for questions, but since we don't, we're going to get right into the warrant. Actually, did you have another slide you want to show?
I just have one more quick slide, just talking about the tax impact. So looking at this slide, you can see what the average single family property tax increase, or actually decrease even in 2015, has been since 2010. And at the end, when you're looking at 2023, it's important to remember that still, even though we're in fiscal '23, it's still an estimate. And so we estimated at the annual town meeting that the increase would be $1,090. Currently, we're estimating that the increase, if we approve all the articles I just mentioned, will be the $781, so that green bar.
Right. And so one of the articles we're going to talk about, because so much of this is predicated on timing, like so one of the articles is the library project, right? But that actual borrow doesn't take place until the future, until like the project is further underway, for lack of a better way to say it. So that impact is not factored in to the FY23 because
Correct.
We're not there yet.
Right.
Okay. And again, for the $781 that you just presented, that's inclusive of the $96.
Yes.
And factors in the increase in valuation and all the work that our town assessor does.
Yep. And then the final numbers will happen at the tax classification hearing in November.
Right. Which we've done a lot of education on and all of that information is on the town website through the town assessor, as well as the select board and town manager's office. So lots of questions there about how we set the tax rate and dual and single, so it's all out there for another discussion. Okay. So let's get into the warrant articles that I had specifically asked Kristi that we cover. And there's a mix here between those that don't have a direct tax impact as well as those that do, but I thought that would be of particular interest to our viewers. So the first one we'll cover is Article 12, which is a new ambulance.
Yep. So we do a capital plan, we do a five-year capital plan. Chief Purcell has indicated the need for this ambulance in fiscal '24, so next fiscal year. But he's asking for this in the fall because of the timing. As everyone knows, it takes a long time to get things ordered and so we're seeing several months, if not over a year, of lag time in terms of ordering these types of equipment. So this is coming to the town on Monday and it will be a transfer from ambulance receipts reserved. So that's important. That's money that comes in from ambulance costs or ambulance receipts.
Yeah. And so So like health insurance, like reimbursement or personal reimbursement, right? So there's a process that the fire department follows when someone is transported and someone gets a bill for that service. And so those are the receipts.
Right. And so some of that money can be set aside and so this would be fully funded by that. So there would be no tax impact for the ambulance and it would be $357,000 from ambulance receipts reserved.
Great. Okay. And I think it's just of note, sometimes folks are like, well, what's the process and how do we get here and is there really planning and are we just kind of going about this willy-nilly? I can assure you, no. Kristi mentioned the, there's a capital planning process, which is a whole committee made up of departments and members of various boards and committees. And there's a very prescriptive process for those as well as every article that you see that's been placed on the warrant has had, in some cases, multiple presentations to the select board, to the finance committee, which puts forward its recommendation in the book that you receive at town meeting, as well as to the school committee doing the same respective presentations. And oftentimes we bring those individuals back because we need clarification or what have you. So anyway, it's a thorough process, but often, oftentimes not well-understood because folks aren't attending every meeting that we're having.
Sure.
Which is fair because you have a life and you have to trust the work that's being done.
Right.
Okay. Article 14, an important topic that many, many folks may have seen in the news, which is around PFAS.
Right. So we've identified the need for some work to be done on the water system, making improvements around PFAS. And I think Chris Pants, he's definitely come to the select board to discuss kind of where we're at related to that. So this is for design costs related to looking into PFAS and addressing any issues. And so that money, it says in the warrant that it's coming from available funds.
Yes.
But the intention is that it will come out of retained earnings. So that would come out of water retained earnings.
Okay. And again, no tax impact, but user fees pay for that effectively are being used.
Correct.
Great. Okay. Article 15, it's a big one, the library. So the library renovation is being proposed. Crystal, will you speak to the grant and anything else that you want to cover enough?
Sure. So the library borrow is on the warrant for $36,698,556. And that would be offset by a grant that we were awarded of $9.4 million. In order for the library to move forward, the town meeting would have to approve this article within six months of hearing about the receipt of the grants, which was in July. So we have to do it by January.
Right.
And so certainly estimating the impact is something that our finance director has done, but wanting to be clear that these are all estimates. But as Shelby had mentioned earlier, the estimated impact would not happen immediately. It happens as the money is borrowed, which happens as the money is needed
Right.
On a funding schedule.
And that's really important. So we don't just go and say, we need $37 million, although we do have to appropriate, we have to, the article has to represent the whole, even though we're getting a grant. We'd like to be able to say, well, we're not really going to ever need that much.
Right.
But that's how it works. And so we only, like you would do hopefully with your own savings, right? You only borrow what you need and then you borrow and borrow and borrow. You try to do that obviously strategically based on kind of need and interest rates and all the municipal finance laws.
Right. So the estimate at this point would be an estimated average impact of $245 throughout the borrow. And that can really range throughout the term of the borrow from $180 to $317, again based on estimates. So we don't know what interest rates we'll get, but using current estimates, that's where we're at.
And as I recall, we typically would see a spike, an initial spike, and then it declines? Is that a true statement in terms of the borrow? So you're one of that borrow is the highest and then it goes down? I know that that's, there are lots of assumptions based on interest rates and how we would be borrowing.
And it depends on the funding schedule also.
Okay. Okay. Great. All right. And again, obviously all of these articles will have a presentation at town meeting and opportunity for questions. All right. Great. We'll transition to open space and acquisition of property. No, excuse me. Yes. With the acquisition of
Zero Ruggles.
Zero Ruggles. Yes.
Yep. So Article 18 is the acquisition of Zero Ruggles. The select board has negotiated with the property owner and entered into a purchase and sale agreement, which is of course contingent on the appropriation of the funding, as well as some additional due diligence. And so the total cost of the, the total cost of the ask on town meeting is $334,000. So that is made up of $325,000 is the purchase price of the property and then $9,000 was the cost to create the survey. And so we actually have, I think, the survey to show.
Let's pull that up.
So the way that the property is being divided is that there would be three sections or three parcels. And so you can kind of, it's kind of difficult to see.
Aiden's going to help, but he's going to add some other color here.
Oh, great.
So in the upper kind of left corner there.
Yep. So off of Valley Brook and Green, there's a small .3 acre parcel, which we're identifying as parcel A. And that parcel is really where we see some, a small parking area, some trailhead access to trails, to parcel B. And that would be transferred to the care and control of the select board for those purposes.
Parcel A would.
Yep. Parcel B is the largest parcel, so 10.16 acres. And the intention of that is to transfer to the conservation commission. So that would be held in open space and it would be protected.
Great.
And then parcel C is 2.76 acres. And you can see next to parcel C is a small sort of square that has a
Like a long tail.
Yeah. Right. That goes down to Ruggles Street. And that's, so that sort of flag-shaped one, the town already owns and there's a water tower on it. And so parcel C would actually be reserved for any additional needs related to the water tower. So structures or access.
Right. Right. And I think just from a viewer perspective, it's important, so this property is contiguous with the day-pray property that we previously, and that really was sort of the interest, obviously also concern from the select board perspective of future development and the planning board had those same questions of what could be done there.
Right.
And that's always the concern. But this is unique in that because we have that water tower and it's a pretty tight space and as our DPW directors already provided, there's actually prior approved work, I forgot what it's called, maybe
The chlorine boosters.
Thank you. Yeah. That's going to be done in that little flag-shaped piece or the long piece. And so that really makes that whole section very tight.
Correct.
And so by adding this for future use, if we had, we have to get up there, we need a new water tower, who knows? So really I think both the strategic perspective and investment, as well as really adding to some really nice open space for parcel recreation.
So I should mention, so the funding source for that article is also not going to impact taxes. So we have an account called Sale of Real Estate. When we sell property, the money from the property goes into the sale of real estate account as is required to. And so half of that, 334, so 167, would come out of that sale of real estate account. And then Wachup Robinson Trust voted yesterday to contribute to the purchase of 167,000, so the other half of that amount.
Right. Very generous.
Yep.
Very excited. That's great.
Yes.
Okay. And then the water treatment plant improvements, if you can just briefly touch on that.
So the water treatment plant is the, it's actually a shared resource with the towns of Shrewsbury and Hopkinton. But Wesboro actually has to borrow the full amount for the improvements to the treatment plant. So it will be shared, the percentage of it is paid by the Shrewsbury residents and then percentage will be paid by the Hopkinton residents. In Wesboro, the payments for this borrow would be paid through user fees.
Right. And the money is for the really, the mechanics, the essential parts of running that plant.
Right.
So again, the article is posted on the town's website and you can read more about all of these. So we have three articles we'll touch briefly on, Articles 21 through 23, really about changing the town seal.
Right. So any change in the town seal requires a town meeting vote. So the first article is really just to do, for the town seal committee, which was appointed in 2021, to provide a report to the town meeting. And then they've actually proposed a new town seal, which is actually an old town seal. So they've proposed our 1717 town seal. There's a picture of it on the warrant for the town meeting's consideration. And so if we were to approve that, they would actually pass over their third article, which is a process to establish a town seal.
Right.
So they've sort of put in this, this sort of safe way of moving forward so that either we approve this new town seal or we set up a new process where we could look for a potential new town seal.
And this is all part of how they were sort of chartered, if you will, informed. And they put a tremendous amount of work. All their meetings have been on TV and they've done community surveys, both virtually as well as in person. So thanks and kudos to that committee for its work. One of the important parts, and we talked about this at our select board meeting on these articles, is that the expectation is, is that from a legal perspective, like if the seal were to change the next day, the town clerk, which stamps, has the embosser, she actually has the old, like the 17, the original one, right? So that could be used immediately, but wherever else you see town seals, patches on public safety officials, cars, letterhead, you know, our street signs actually are slays, that's a whole different thing. Those would all have to be kind of, you know, there would be a process to evaluate that because it would be a budgetary impact to that change at some point.
Right.
So we'd have to just kind of figure out the prioritization of that. Okay. And then finally, Kristi, just if you could touch on the home rule, senior tax relief before we transition to schools.
Sure. So the senior tax relief committee was charged with coming up with ideas for senior tax relief. And so they've brought forward some other articles related to accepting statutes for exemptions. But this is actually a totally new idea that they're putting forward, which is a means-based senior tax relief. And so some of the criteria that would allow for someone to take advantage of this exemption would be they were living in a home that was owned and occupied by that person, they're over 65, and that they've owned a home in Wesboro for at least 10 consecutive years. The idea being that trying to find mechanisms for people to feel like they can age in place in their homes. And so this actually requires a couple of different actions, but the first is for the town meeting to authorize the board to petition the legislature for the passage of this.
Great. Well, hopefully we can lead the way. I know we're not the only community struggling with it, so really appreciate the work of that committee. All right. You can take a breath.
Great.
And we're going to transition over to Daniel. So in the time we have remaining, we're going to wrap up here with schools. So there are three articles. Sort of the first two really deal with sort of a budget change as well as the use of sort of for one-time expenditures. So you can touch on those, please.
Yeah. Correct. So Article 6 and Article 7 are the two articles that pertain to students and unanticipated costs with 11 students that we need to outplace outside of the district. Students who need exceptional, highly specialized care that we can't provide in district, we have to send out a district. And while we have hundreds of students that we service in district, there are about 40 at any, that currently need outplacement services, nine of whom on the first article are ones that after we appropriated the budget last year, came into needing these services and said they were unanticipated and we didn't budget them. And they're to some degree post-COVID kind of, you know, issues that we have discovered in terms of kids who are having some severe mental health issues. And so we have nine students we didn't anticipate that we need to send out a district. That's Article 6. And that's the $628,000 that would be added to the budget and has a cost associated in terms to the taxpayers. The other article, Article 7, there are two students where there was a settlement with two different families and those students need to be outplaced too, and that money would be coming from free cash.
Sure. Sure. Okay. And so just for viewer's benefit, there is a whole very complex process on, I'll call it the backend, which is the reimbursement from the state, which blows my mind that it lags by almost a year and a half to two years, right? When we actually get our funding.
Yes.
So we have to project and we have to service these students.
Before the state gives us the money to actually help with
Right.
Yeah. And it's called the circuit breaker, which is the law, and they basically will present you with a percentage of the costs and help the community to pay for those expenses.
And that percentage usually is around what?
70%.
Yep.
But it has dipped down to 60 and 65% at any given year, there's some anticipated cut, you know, sort of.
Anything else, Kristi, you want to add in terms of kind of the six and seven and how the monies were kind of allocated?
Sure. Yeah. So six, as Daniel mentioned, is part of the operating budget. So operating expenses, we always raise and appropriate, so it always has a tax impact. But we know that it'll be in the budget next year, that the need will remain. We typically use free cash for one-time expenses. So as mentioned, those settlement agreements are acknowledged as one-time expenses. There are two students whose needs will be paid out of that article, but my understanding is that we're not sure of the exact timing of those placements. And so rather than raise money on the taxes for an unknown cost, we would pull it out of free cash and we should expect it in the budget next year.
Right. Right. So again, for the viewer's benefit, Article 6 are the known, those are expenses that are being incurred now by the district. There are, Article 7 takes care of two settlements and then two students whose outplacement is unknown in terms of the timing, so.
And one thing I would add that I forgot to mention is I've been in the district in this role for 13 years and this is the first time this has happened. It's not, for long-term residents, they know we have not come to town meeting and asked for money for outplacements. And so, you know, it's an unusual set of circumstances.
Sure.
And we obviously don't want to be in this position, but we are. And so in order to be able to operate the school district appropriately, in the way that the town was anticipating we would, we need these extra dollars.
Absolutely. And theoretically, those numbers could also change. I mean, they could go down, someone doesn't need to be outplaced. So again, those are all things that you are, you guys are assessing that on a year-to-year basis.
Yep.
And then the final article is, again, just want to stress to folks, because of the length of this, we do anticipate this is going to be a two-night event. So if you're wondering what to do next Monday and Tuesday, now you have plans. Article 30.
Article 30. Yeah. So this is having to do with the Hastings School. And there have been several articles over the last few years having to do with the HVAC system and we've already approved funds to upgrade the HVAC system in the school. And so the money is there, but this article is not affecting the money, it's just that there's unanticipated need to basically come to code when it comes to, it's the ADA requirements. And you need for ADA upgrades to a building, you need to do a compliance study. And so we need to be able to be given permission from the town at the meeting to be able to take a portion of already appropriated monies to be able to do the ADA study. And I think it's in the order of two or three, I don't have the number, do you know it off the top of your head? $200,000 or $300,000 that we need to appropriate. So again, it's money that's been appropriated and it's giving us permission to use a portion of that money to do the ADA study.
Right. So my kind of simple analogy might be if you were working, not the same requirements in a private home, but if you had a home project and you've sort of anticipated, this is what we're going to do, and then you had a meeting with the building inspector and they said, oh, well, actually, you know, the electrical isn't compliant. We didn't budget for that. You thought we were okay. So we're effectively, it's much more complex than this, but we're effectively expanding the article to allow the school to progress with a project that voters may remember, several years ago, we just said, we're not going to do a massive renovation of Hastings and One Lum Sun like we did with Fails recently. We're going to take this and piecemeal. And there were lots of decisions that supported that at the time by town meeting and all the collaborative committees and bodies and staff. But this is sort of that result, right? Because it's a building that's aging and needs to be updated and we've effectively, when you meet certain triggers, that thresholds, monetary thresholds based on the valuation and so on and so forth, and then that trips other requirements. And this would happen anyway, but it's just, it's a standard
And the project can't proceed unless we do the ADA study.
Exactly.[1733.32]